And councillor Beck is the ward councillor who is sitting at the table. So we now have Charlotte Burton as the planning officer, Sandy Reid. Could you introduce this?
Chair, may I hand out some papers? They're all in the public domain on the website.
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. The application is for alterations and extensions, a single-storey extension to the existing leisure centre associated with the hotel to create 10 additional hotel bedrooms and things like that. The site comprises the leisure centre wing of the Downton Hotel to the south of the main hotel buildings. The site sits on the front place of Little Main and a large parking area within the site. The site is being the central conservation area. The hotel buildings are not listed, they're local buildings of local interest. The site is being setting of the adjacent listed buildings including Pitt House College and Fitzwilliam Museum. Cove Fair and Sheep's Green and the River Canal are designated as county private sites and are nature of ours. And there is tree protection, protecting trees on the site as well. So this is the existing leisure centre, which I'm sure you're familiar with. It forms a linear access running north south. The fence is facing the frontage onto the River Canal, it's relatively modest. And the park is screened by the trees. The leisure centre element dates from the early 1990s. It's obviously a historical story with extensive cladding as well as a pyramid roof. And included drawings, sorry photographs here just showing the recent extensions to the main part of the hotel. This is more photographs that are brought with us up. This is the existing ground floor sign. I've highlighted in red outline here the leisure centre element. And just highlighted in red some of the existing facilities including swimming pool, gymnasium, workout studio, some saunas and associated facilities, just all kinds of things that would be planned. This is the proposed site plan, which is showing again the 10-metre extension to the leisure centre, which I've highlighted here in red. And again, some of the facilities that were provided. So replacement swimming pool, sauna and jacuzzi, virtual fitness studios and a fitness suite here. And you can also see the 10 additional entry rooms which were created within the existing leisure centre. And there would also be some associated navigating and parking changes as well. These are the elevations for western sides. This is visible from the river, sorry. Here's the proposal of his removal of the pyramid roof. Some cladding to the southern elevation including bridges and other things as well. And the placement of the green roof. And during the course of the applications, the roof layers were added. Just comments on the urban design and conservation team primarily going into the policy of the internal warrant for users of the facilities. So these are the other elevations. So this is from the car park side. And then from the end elevations, we're showing again some of the extensions that have already been built up. So the two key issues to this application are the visual impact of the extension and the external alterations and the impact on the vision of the leisure facilities. There's an essential planning history to the site, which is an interior consideration which members will be aware of. I have provided the planning history if your reference is needed. I highlighted 2011 and 2013 applications, which are verdi. Provided again just some comparisons of what those previous applications were for as an extract from my report. Looking firstly at visual impact, the current application is obviously for 10-metre extension. This is a single-storey extension, relatively minor in my opinion. And we don't have much of a visual, very significant visual impact on the views from the river from the surrounding open space and the long faces within the conservation area as well as setting of these buildings within the wider area. By way of putting that in context to the previous applications, 2011's been used for much larger substantial extensions. And this was appealed, including the impact on the conservation area. The 2013 review scheme was for similar proposal in terms of the removal of the pyramid and the cladding. It didn't include an extension. However, visual impact of this wasn't considered to be a reason for refusal of that scheme. As a brief update, this morning I received representations from the Federation of Cambridge Residents Associations highlighting sensitivity of the site. However, I'm satisfied that that's been addressed in my assessment.
But I just wanted to bring that to your reception.
Moving to the second issue relating to the impact of the leisure facilities. The use of the existing community facilities or existing facilities by members of the public was established through the 2013 decision. And this has been reinforced through representations that were included from the current application. The council considers that the existing use is related to use funds deep to, which relates to community facilities. And the council has a policy 6.3 which protects such facilities from the risk of their loss and left them in super places. I provided in my report a comparison of the existing facilities with the proposed replacement facilities. And I concluded the 2013 scheme, just as a benchmark, is the 2013 application was refused against policy 6.3 in the basis that the replacement that was offered at that time was not of a significant scale and variety to the existing facilities. And I highlighted in my report how I feel that the current proposal does provide a facility which significantly exceeds what was proposed under the 2013 application. And the swimming pool would be a similar size to the existing. It would be replaced in the fitness suite, which would be similar to the gymnasium that we lost. And the virtual fitness suite would replace the studio in place as well. The proposal would include the loss of some of the treatment rooms. However, these were around and reported to beauty treatments that were offered by hotel guests rather than affecting the beauty that was offered to local residents. And considering the subsidies, they remain very comparable in terms of changing rooms, conception areas, etc. And in my opinion, the current proposal would represent an opportunity to enhance the quality of the facility and bring it up to standard. The applicant has submitted a statement outlining the offer to hotel residents and to members of the public as well. The hotel residents would have complimentary access to the facility and membership system not only for non-residents, non-resident guests of the hotel as well, so members of the water ward. And the statement commits to a minimum membership of 400 people and operating hours. This anticipates around 150 to 100 regular users, which the applicant has stated would be similar to any facility previously operated. So I'm satisfied that this demonstrates the applicant's commitment to continue allowing leisure facilities to be used by non-residents, sorry, by people who are not staying in the hotel. And I recommend a condition 16 which would secure this, both through operating hours to such an order and operation of the membership system as well. And as an update to my report, just to highlight the letter sheet having included an additional condition to secure the delivery of leisure centres prior to use of the hotel bedrooms in order to guard against part implementation of the facility. And the applicant's decision has agreed this condition and confirmed that part implementation is not their part intention. So subject to this, it might come in use of the facility with similar use of operation and the use still constitute standalone community facilities. I assess other matters with regards to transport impacts and environmental impacts and access and other impacts in my report. And in my opinion, the current proposal will offer us an opportunity to retain the leisure facility on the site with access to local residents or allow the hotel to expand with additional bedrooms, which contributes to the use identified in order to cover the four hotel bedrooms. So the policy recommendations are completely subject to conditions.
Thank you, Charlotte. James Singleton, you've got three minutes.
Thank you. I'm speaking on behalf of the South Newham Neighbourhood Forum and five local residence associations. We have been bludgeoned by repeated applications for extensions to the hotel. Since 2010, there have been seven. All but one has been refused, and there are good reasons why this application should also be turned down. Firstly, the leisure centre. It does not meet policy 6.3 of the local plan that development will only be permitted if the facility can be replaced to at least its existing scale and quality. The floor space is significantly reduced. The swimming pool is shorter. There's no 70-square-metre gymnasium. The membership is reduced from over 700 to 400. Clearly, the proposal falls far short of the specified criteria. Secondly, and importantly, extending and cladding provision will harm this historic area of Cambridge. In 2013, when an application was submitted to add 16 bedrooms to a new fourth-storey and without increasing the footprint to convert the leisure centre to 13 bedrooms, it received huge opposition and was refused. The case officer mentions the chief reason for the loss of the leisure facilities, but those attending the meeting will remember the committee's concern about the conversion of a glass pyramid to a solid structure. A year later, a further application was made and passed for the 16 bedrooms from the previously refused 2013 application. A larger version of the second part of the 2013 application is before you. It has the advantages of leisure facilities, albeit greatly reduced, but it has the significant disadvantage of a new 10-metre extension, which will stretch along the riverfront and into a narrow strip of land between the ancient fens. A precious part of Cambridge is lost every time we allow building on our riverfront. Here, we will lose the views between the two ancient fens and of the Fitzwilliam Museum. Furthermore, instead of a light glass building, the proposal is a brutal block of sink and brick. Planning inspector Simon Barclay stated, "The views of the glass pavilion quite rapidly lessen with distance, such that the building only marginally interferes in the longer views from the many parts of Sheep's Green." The current structure sits lightly on the landscape. Instead, the proposed block will not sit lightly, nor will the view rapidly lessen with distance. Its mass and scale and its intrusion contravene the local plan's policies." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ifra Goldman.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Ifra Goldman from Infinity Architects, and we are the agents for this application. The application before you seeks a modest extension and alterations to the existing single-storey part of the Doubletree Hotel. The extension and alterations will provide 10 additional rooms and the leisure facility to a very popular hotel. The application has full support at officer level with the urban design and conservation team, who agree that the extension is a modest addition and will provide proportionate leisure facilities. The planning officer has prepared a clear and helpful table on page 305 of the report before you, which has been shown on the right screen today. This provides a comparison of the existing hotel leisure facilities and the proposed leisure facilities under this application. The only other further point I would add to this is that our client is committed to providing state-of-the-art facilities, and these will be a significant improvement in facilities within the leisure sector when it was last operational in 2014. It acknowledged that the extension would be visible from the green roof. However, the majority of the proposals are within the existing footprint of the building, and the general mass will only marginally increase. The proposed fenestration and material palette will rationalise the existing single-storey elements of the hotel, providing more coherence with the current south wing that has recently been overplanned. The removal of the pyramid roof section and the introduction of a green roof will go some way to softening the development. And the small extension, which is prepared to extend mostly into the car park area, will be further softened with landscape proposals. The additional 10 bedrooms will contribute towards the council's identified demand for further hotel accommodation in the city. The commitment from the applicant to provide a leisure facility that is open to the public through membership for 400 people means that all of the previous regular 150 to 200 users of the place facility could benefit from the new improved facilities proposed as part of this development. The car parking has been shown to be adequate for the site, and this scheme proposes additional disabled parking spaces to bring the facilities in line with the current parking standards. The overcladding of the existing building with flood-resistant materials at low level, as indicated on the submitted elevations, will aid in the protection of the existing building from risk of flooding. As highlighted in the officer's conclusion, the proposed single-storey extension would be minor and will not have a harmful impact on the conservation area. The palette of materials for the cladding has been previously accepted on site and would visually tower the leisure centre wing to the main hotel. This would enhance the coherence of the buildings on the site. The proposals accord with the development plan and the MPBF, and respectfully ask that the proposals are approved today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Beck.
Thanks, Chair. This site is located in my ward. But I think it's fair to say that appreciation of the facilities and the direct appreciation of the environmental impact has historically been primarily experienced by residents of the Newham Ward and Trumpington Ward. I think, though, in saying that, they are experiencing this site as somehow watchdogs for the whole of the city, because this is a site that is one of the small handful of sites that is making up, I think, what is quintessential historic and natural Cambridge. And I think that in terms of the word marginal, the tenor of my comments is that marginality does matter in such sites. I know that councillor Councillor from Newham Ward has been very active over the whole sequence of previous applications. And he regrets that for a work commitment he can't be here today. But so I've been asked to speak on his behalf, but also share and support his views. As the committee is aware from the officer's report, the application is the latest in a long series of applications on this site. The previous applications, we think, are important in the evaluation of this proposal. And in our view, there are two primary issues that lead us to our concerns. As the officers indicate, the refusal in 2013 wasn't based on design or materials, but the provision of leisure facilities. The officer suggests in the report that the provision used as leisure facilities, as set out in this proposal, isn't materially different from the facilities that have been provided historically as a result of the much earlier application of 1990s. And we would disagree with that view. I think that the table on page 305 clearly, transparently demonstrates that these facilities are smaller and are less. And that in a growing city, that is the wrong direction. And that we should be defending to the letter the policy 6.4. The second key issue for us is the addition of the 10 metres along the sensitive river frontage. And as the officers indicate, the planning inspector's comments on the previous application gave significant weighting to the views, the importance of the views across the conservation area, and importantly, the sense of openness. And the quote I have from that is the following, that the presence of the hotel's leisure facilities building and the car park, that's what's there now, do disrupt the openness of the two green spaces and interrupt some of the views from Sheep's Green to the city centre. And that's without this development that I think is worth noting. We disagree with the officer's view that this extension in length won't have a detrimental impact on the setting of this highly sensitive site. And how the changes to the building form can have a negative impact on the overall setting can be seen in the current work under the application that was approved previously to increase the volume of the existing building with an additional floor. And that experience, I think, already shows on the site that volume has a dramatic effect on the sense of space around the hotel and its buildings. The officer says that the additional green ring will soften the extension. Again, we both disagree. The extension in length will impact the overall setting of the views in a detrimental way. So again, in respect to previous contributions, we would both submit that marginality does matter. This is one of the most sensitive sites in Cambridge. Commitments have been made about leisure facilities. These should be defended, and marginality does matter.
Thank you very much indeed. Now the discussion is over. You should members. Peter Sackness.
Can I ask the officer, please, if she can tell us what's in the current gymnasium, she knows. I'm trying to compare the different levels of facility being provided as well. What is in the gymnasium is the aspect seems to be disappearing. In that the fitness suite is about, the proposed fitness suite should be the same size as the current workout studio. So what's in the gymnasium that's not going to be in the new proposed facility? And just to clarify as well, I mean, the table refers to the virtual fitness suite. But then you have references in the report on the same page, or simply, I don't know, the next page, simply to virtual fitness classes. So are the virtual fitness facilities going to be located in that fitness suite? Or is that a separate space that's being alluded to?
I'm Patrick Shaw.
Yes, please. Answer that really well.
Thank you, Chair. I think the first thing to say is that, as the agent explained, the facility has been out of use since 2014. So obviously, I wasn't able to go in and see exactly what was inside those rooms. I think the important thing is about the nature of what would be offered to the users in terms of the types of classes, for instance. I don't have equipment from the agent in terms of what kind of classes they intend to operate. However, I think the spaces do allow some flexible use. I think in relation to the terms use of virtual classes and virtual suites, in discussions with the applicant's agents, I think that's probably more effective of a change in the nature of fitness classes and what people want rather than what is necessarily what the constraints of what's being proposed would allow. So the facility would allow classes to be led by, excuse me. And as I understand it, it would be people who were able to use attractive media to run a class rather than having an instructor at the front. And as I understand it, that's a change in the nature of ways that classes are offered in these kind of facilities, rather than any kind of limitation being put on this exact facility. If that answers the question.
Any further comments? Councillor Smart.
So thanks to the speakers. It's a pretty ugly building as it is. I don't think that this addition helps the break day really, except to give the hotel more rooms to use. This is a very sensitive area in Cambridge, both for residents and for visitors. And the tourists members are important to us. I don't think this proposed extension to the building is going to help the look of it at all. And as was alluded to, the difference in construction from grass to cementous and other materials will detract from its look in the landscape from the bends. And 10 metres is significant, I believe. I presume that the, I mean, what we're looking at here is a kind of little extension to try and get a bit more out of the building, possibly to give a lever for future planning applications to get a bigger building in. But it's, what we're looking at is not a nice piece, you know, a quality piece of architecture. It's a piece of business going on here, making more money from the site. I note that Infinity Architects on their side don't talk about the architectural traction of this building, but the fact that they secured land remission for their core extension when they did that. And that's what's happening here. We're looking at trying to make more money from the site. I'm sorry, but that's all this really about. And I feel that, that's not a bad thing in itself, but I feel that it will detract from that very sensitive area, and I've walked around it myself many times. And as has been said by one of the speakers, the glass wall building, although it's not particularly attractive itself in that context, does tend to sort of submerge into the background. Whereas this proposed development will not do that. It will look much bigger and bulkier. And I think the mass and scale of the proposed development will be too significantly bad in that context. So I think I'm going to vote against probably.
Councillor Blenko.
Yeah, those of us who've been on this question a while, probably some of us too long, remember some of the previous discussions about applications, particularly this one in those contexts. As I recall, the actual extension wasn't the issue last time. It was the actual loss of the leisure facility or the comparable loss of a leisure facility. Clearly detailed in the report. And the officer is happy that the facility is replicated. Some of the residents clearly appear should be on a bigger scale. But there's a sense of balance here, because don't forget, we have a need of hotel accommodation, extra rooms within the city. There's an awful lot of people keep telling everybody who visits the city to stay a bit longer. Well, if they're going to stay a bit longer, they've got to have some way to stay. Therefore, that suggests we need more hotel accommodation. So there's a balance here between keeping the leisure facility on a comparable scale, which I think they have, and having additional bedrooms, which in, forget the commercial sense, we have a Cambridge property that can provide accommodation for visitors. And existing hotels, extensions to existing hotels often preferable to new hotels being built in inappropriate locations. So I think there's a balance to be struck in. I think, to be quite blunt, the loss of the glass period is well before, well after its time. It should be removed because it is in confluence and that's certainly a problem. And I think the actual overall development is acceptable.
I'd just like to remind people that it's now, what is it, three, four years that that hotel has not been providing leisure facilities. One of the merits of this scheme would be that they would be reinstated. I think that if you feel that the removal of things like beauty rooms and so on is a significant change in the nature of the provision, I think that's really stretching the point. Essentially, the facilities that were originally there have been restored. There will therefore be a leisure centre, which will, on the same basis that it did, in numerical basis almost, that it's available to the residents of the hotel. It will be available to community use. So I see that as being a principal advantage. Whether the extension along the riverfront seriously adds to any alleged impact upon the views and so on, I wonder about that. I don't think my conviction is strong enough to make me vote against this. So I am minded to vote for it, to vote for the officer recommendation. And those of you who are not, you need to start thinking carefully about formulating your reasons for it, if that is your position. Charlotte, do you need to come back on this?
Thank you, Chair. I think just one point with regard to assessing the visual impact. I think we need to consider the impact of the changes as a whole. We see the extension as one part of it, there's also the removal of the roof and the replacement with the green roof and the impact that that would have in the softening. The overall...
and the replacement with a green roof and the impact that that would have in softening the overall of the visual appearance. There's also the fact that the existing area where the extension would be is used by car parking and the impact of that has on the views from the river. So just to consider the visual impact as a whole, and as possibly the incentive to balance that against the gain of hotel bedrooms and the view of the visual property facility. Thank you.
Yes, and I'd like to support the point made by Kevin Benko, that I have often urged that tourism policy in the city should be more obviously in favour of long-staying guests. And that does require suitable hotel accommodation, and this is to be increased by this evening. I don't want to have the last word, I'm not going to have the last word. Councillor Smart is going to have a word.
Six point three, the access of the facility accessible. We should have a slide in the last report, and that would be a point I'd also make if this came to the board.
I think we've come to the crunch now. We've got to make up our minds. It's a difficult one. We've had a good rehearsal of the points for and against. I'm going to put the matter to the vote. The officer recommendation here is one of approval. Those in favor, please indicate.
I'll have, Chair.
And those against, two. Thank you very much.